...to Highway Hospitality and the LLC, EB 2017, 2005. Site plan and various application for construction of a hotel property located in 19th street, 18th lot, 710 dash dot oh two lot, six point oh six, zoning district C five.
Thank you, members of the board. Thomas F. Kelsel on behalf of the applicant Highway Hospitality and the LLC.
Hello.
My traffic is slow. Must be too much traffic. Anyway, I'm pleased to be before you this evening for, I think, what is the really exciting application for the city. We are looking for preliminary and final site plan with various approvals for the construction of a four-story hotel building, which is intended to be Hilton Home to Suite. It contains 109 guest rooms. The building will also include a lobby, indoor pool, a patio, a breakfast area, fitness room, outdoor lounge space, and parking for 109 spaces. The property is located in the C five, the community commercial zone, and this use is a permitted use in the zone. The applicant is seeking a series of variances, some of which are existing conditions. We emphasize to you, we believe all of these variances are minor in nature. And I'll list them for you just so we have them for the record. First, there's a lot area variance of 1.76 acres, whereas a minimum of five acres is required. Again, that's an existing condition. There is a front yard setback off the Route One frontage of 72.6 feet and 58.7 feet off the Route 18 frontage, whereas 100 feet is required. There is a lot width of 214 feet, whereas a minimum of 400 feet is required. That's an existing condition. A lot depth of 297 feet, whereas a minimum of 400 required. That is also an existing condition. So you can see the size and the configuration of the lot is what it is. The lot's there, and for any permitted use that would commit, they're going to have the same variance conditions because of the size of the lot. There's a side yard setback variance of 36.2 feet, whereas a minimum of 50 feet is required. A total side yard setback of 99.7 feet, whereas a minimum of 100 feet is required. Essentially, almost 100 feet. A sign variance permitting a five-foot setback to the Route One ramp, whereas a minimum of 20 is required. You'll note that this is the, basically, the ground sign that would be in the front of the Hilton and faces the ramp. And you're more familiar with the ramp as it goes by the site. There's a sign variance of 8.5 feet setback from Route 18, whereas a minimum of 20 feet is required. This is an existing condition also. This is the hall sign that's there today that was the Bennigan sign that was there before. There's a freestanding sign height variance of 50 feet, whereas a maximum of 40 feet is permitted. Once again, I'm referring to the same sign. It's an existing condition. The sign is there. They're just going to replace the Bennigans with the Hilton Two sign. There's an impervious coverage variance of 86%, whereas a maximum of 75% is permitted. A location of a loading space in the front yard, whereas same is not permitted. And a loading space of 10 feet by 50 feet, whereas a minimum of 12 by 50 feet. Again, a very minor variance. And finally, the parking variance. We are seeking a variance to permit 109 spaces, whereby my calculation, 119 would be required. So it's a minus 10 parking spaces. My intent is to call the typical witnesses that you would expect. I'm going to be calling our applicant's principal, who the company will be the owner of the facility. We will call our architect, our civil engineer, our traffic consultant, and our planning consultant. And we also have with us this evening to answer any questions you have, the representative of the management company, who will actually be managing the facility on behalf of the owner, and who has much experience with managing these types of facilities, including other Hilton facilities. Overall, we believe that the application is an exciting one in that we're providing a new ratable to the city, a permitted use in a location that we think isn't benign as compared to what you would see with some of the other permitted uses that might potentially create more traffic and circulation issues than this type of use. Hopefully, we'll be able to do this in an expedited fashion so we don't all freeze to death in this way. If there is no further questions or any questions for me, I would call our first witness. And that would be Mr. Mitchell Heisler.
Can you read your hands, state your names, by your last name, please?
Mitchell Heisler.
Just tell it.
H E I S L E R.
And do you swear to the truth in this matter?
Thank you. My name is Mitchell Heisler. I'm a member of Highway Hospitality and the B. I've been involved in real estate business since 1990, partnered various development ventures with principal responsibility for administration and project management. Highway Hospitality and the B is affiliated with Highway Homes LLC, which has been developing residential real estate since 2002, has been named developer in a number of towns in Mount Broadway, Saturday Hill, and Aberdeen. We're very pleased to be bringing this product to New Brunswick and very happy to have signed a 20-year franchise agreement with Hilton for the site. We think that that will bring, we get to be part of the Hilton brand, which is one of the top brands in the world. We also get to tap into their reservation network, which will drive significant business to the property. The property is a mid-scale whole suites product. We hope to serve the deep business community in the area, where Johnson, Quakers University, pharma business at Denver One. We have pool seating areas, free Wi-Fi, and a number of amenities that should be making a very attractive product for those businesses and those kinds of customers in this market.
Just a couple of questions for you with regard to the franchise, because I understand that they're dedicated to the benefit of the, within the Hilton system. There actually is the ability to have reservation referrals through the Hilton brand?
That's one of the reasons you want to be affiliated with a brand like Hilton or Marriott. It's a very powerful reservation network, which will drive a lot of business to your hotel.
And you, did you in fact conduct a market study, and did Hilton actually conduct a market study?
Hilton previewed the site, approved the site, and then we ran our own independent market study for the site, which showed that it's a highly viable site for this product. Hilton's also in the marketplace about less than a mile away, so they validated this market already with their brand for an existing product, just now going towards a turnback. So they know this market well. They approved the franchise. We studied it ourselves, so we're confident in the market.
I'm sorry. So you actually enter into a franchise agreement with Hilton, and you operate under those franchise requirements of Hilton?
Yeah, we have a 20-year agreement with franchise and agreement with Hilton. And they're pretty strict about maintaining their brand. I mean, that's one of the valuable things that they sell to people like us, is that brand, and they're very careful about it. So we are subject to regular inspection, to periodic property improvement regimes where we have to, you know, they can come in and tell us, we don't like the way the carpet looks, switch that out, put that in, and we need to do it. So they, we also have to design the facility to their very strict standards. So they're part of this process from the beginning of design through operations, and we'll hire a, we'll have a third-party management group, which is experienced with Hilton and will be approved by Hilton. That's very important, that they have the right management company, and that Hilton understands them and approves them. And we have that in place where we're at. So Hilton's going to be watching us, and are very, very careful about brand maintenance and how we maintain their brand for them.
Okay, just a question that I would ask you in anticipation of perhaps one or two questions you may get from the public, and that is with regard to this franchise agreement. If you were to make a determination that within that 20 years, you said, wow, we, you know, we don't want to do Hilton anymore, and you wanted to then terminate the agreement, what would that mean?
Well, that would be, Hilton would come to you and say, well, we expect a 20-years worth of revenue. If you'd like to terminate it, please pay us all that revenue now. So the penalty for terminating the agreement is owners, would cost millions of dollars to them. So it's very unlikely that we'd want a part company with Hilton.
And if that holds true, also does it not, if you were to sell this facility to another owner, they are subject to that franchise agreement?
They have to consent. So they have to approve, if we decided we wanted to sell to another owner, they would have to approve the owner, and the owner would have to go through the same process that we went through. So we can't sell without their consent. It would have to be approved, approved ownership group, and approved management company as well.
I have no further questions, Mr. Heisler.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I have a call, Mr. Michael Rodriguez.
Can you read your hands, state your names, by your last name, please?
Michael Rodriguez, R O D R I G U E S.
And do you swear to the truth in this matter?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez, you are a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
That's correct.
And in that capacity, you are familiar with the engineer site plan and the civil engineering aspects of the project itself, correct?
That's correct.
Could you give the board then the benefit of your professional qualifications and experience?
Sure. I'm a licensed professional engineer for the last eight years. I've been working in site development for the past 13 years here in New Jersey. I've done everything from apartment buildings to banks, single-family homes, and this is my first hotel project. I've testified here before New Brunswick in the past for the Parker, Francis C. Parker assisted living building, their parking lot expansion.
Andrew Parker.
Thank you. If you could then, Mr. Rodriguez, I need to ask a specific question. Can you just run through for us the various civil engineering aspects of the plan with regard to lighting and landscaping and layout and so forth, stormwater management and the like? And also, if you, while you're doing that, for those variances that I listed, if you could just point out where they are, so that where you're graphic, and where the public can see what we're talking about?
Sure. Just to orient everybody to the project site, the project site is back in the north.
Sorry, can't talk like an introvert.
A one. We need to mark that. Can you just mark that?
Let's orient everyone to the site. To the north, as Tom mentioned previously, there's the Route One North to Route 18 North Jug Handle that grabs the site on both sides. Today, the site is developed as a vacant restaurant use. That was a Bennigan, if anyone's familiar with it. To the west, there's an existing Exxon gas station. To the east, there is a existing car wash. The site is accessed today by two driveways, one Inglis to the east and one Erest to the west. Those will be maintained in the proposed project. As you can see, the building here, which is colored peach oranges color, has been designed in a way to incorporate the shape of the property. As cars enter the site on the easterly driveway, they can access the parking spaces throughout the site and can circulate around the building. And when we leave the site to the Erest driveway, there's 109 guest rooms being proposed in the four-story building, and as well, there's 109 parking spaces, and that's a Hilton standard. Although, which I will get to, that we're short of the New Brunswick ordinance standard, which is 119 spaces. Other aspects of the project, there's a perimeter sidewalk around the building to lead people from their parking spaces to each of their entry doors. There are outdoor patios as extra amenity spaces, and those are detached areas that I just pointed to. The trash will be collected in the enclosure at the southwesterly corner of the property. That will be picked up, you know, as a regular basis, but has been sized accordingly with the size of the hotel. Some of the other engineering aspects, the property today drains from north to south. There's an existing head wall within the Route 18 right-of-way that accepts stormwater from the site today. Those drainage patterns are going to be maintained in the proposed condition. The site also increases impervious area on the project slightly by approximately 3900 square feet, which is 5% of the project area. To offset the increases in runoff, we propose to create the parking spaces that are in the southwesterly corner of the site into a forest pavement, and that will help mitigate some of the surface runoff that's created by the additional pavement that's not on the property today. As far as meeting the regulations for stormwater management, this property doesn't require groundwater recharge, which is a state requirement, due to the fact that we're in the metropolitan planning area, and that's an existing use today. Water quality is also not required here. We're below the threshold of an increase of 1/4 acre of impervious area to the site. However, for stormwater quantity, the site will increase stormwater quantity in lieu of, I'm sorry, instead of, if we did not provide any forest pavement or permeable pavers, we would have an increase in stormwater runoff. However, we feel that this is a way to mitigate those increases, and I've calculated and submitted to the city reviewers that the increase, even though if we were not to do this, would be very negligible. So I think this is a great benefit and a great alternative to stormwater retention. As far as the landscaping and lighting that's being proposed, Mr. Bignell's letter required us to add additional trees along the frontage of Route 18. As you can see, there's, it looks much thinner than along the Route One side as far as proposed shade trees. However, there's an existing sanitary sewer force main that runs, it's a 24-inch line that comes from the township of South Brunswick up Route One and then traverses the site here along the easterly and southerly property line. So that limits what we can do as far as planting trees because of that existing pipe system there. And lighting as well, we meet the city ordinance requirements. One of those is to produce light spillage from the property onto adjacent sites, and it's a minimum of .25 foot handles, which we can meet. However, it does create another design waiver of a minimum of .5 foot handles throughout the site, and that's just because of the existing, I'm sorry, the proposed curb line versus property line is so close that it just, you can't have it both ways there on the lighting. Also with stormwater management, we have received approval for soil orders and set them in control from the Green Old Soils District. And I think for the variances, as Mr. Kelsel mentioned, I'd like to list those again and point those out on the plan to where they are. The minimum lot area, as you mentioned, is an existing condition. The site is 1.76 acres in the C five zoning district. Five acres is required. That also inhibits the lot width and depth. 400 feet are required for the lot width and 400 feet for the lot depth. Those are for the width, 214 feet and 297 feet respectively for width, width and depth. Those, of course, are existing conformities. The minimum front yard setback to Route One from this building is, to the north, is 72.6 feet, whereas 100 feet is required. To Route 18, the setback to the south is 58.7 feet. The side yard setback requirements are 50 on one side and 100 for both sides included. The setback is proposed to be 36.2 feet on this westerly corner at its closest point on both sides at this minimum, and also adding the closest point on the east side brings it to 99.7 feet, or 100 feet is required. So we're requesting a variance for that. As I mentioned with the stormwater, the maximum impervious coverage throughout the site does increase the allowable, the allowable is 75%. Existing case is 81%, and most cases 86, we're increasing it by 5%. On parking, the ordinance requires one space per two guest rooms plus an additional one space for each 1,000 square feet of gross floor area. We do not comply with that, but rather the Hilton standard of one space per guest room, which is 109 spaces proposed. And that's 10 short of what's required of 119. The loading, there's a loading space being provided at the northeastern corner of the site, and this is due to the layout of the building just inhibited the placement of this loading space anywhere else, just fit best here. However, the location of the spaces within the front yard in that is not allowed by the ordinance. Also, the size of the space with this layout and orientation of the building, you could only accommodate a 10-foot wide space by 50 feet in length. 12 feet wide by 50 feet in length is the ordinance standard, which we do not comply with. As far as signage, there's an existing pylon sign at the southwestern corner of the property facing Route 18. That sign today is 50 feet in height. The maximum allowable signage is 40 feet. However, and I'll get, I have another plan to show the board that's going to demonstrate what the new sign would look like there. The existing sign is a nine-and-a-half feet tall cabinet, as they call it, which is at the top of the pylon pole. That's nine-and-a-half feet tall by 21 feet wide. The new sign would be seven-and-a-half feet tall by 13-and-a-half feet wide, which is a two-foot reduction. So although the existing sign is 10 feet above the allowable, it will be reduced by two feet with the addition of the proposed cabinet. And the setback of the proposed signage, 20 feet is the required setback. As you can see, it's close to the property line. However, the proposed monument sign at the northeastern corner of the driveway is only five feet from the property line. There also are a number of design waivers I'd like to also explain. The street trees required along the frontage at 30 to 50 feet on center, as mentioned previously, due to the existing pipeline at the southerly property line, you know, that limits the amount of street trees that we can place there, so we need a waiver for that. There's also existing vegetation along the Route 18 right-of-way that we won't be destroying. I mean, it isn't off the property, but it does help to add some buffer from the view from the Route 18 side, southerly side of the property. In addition, there's a five-foot buffer required from the parking area to the property line. Nearly the entire perimeter, we do hold five feet at least. However, there is a smaller quarter, the northeastern side of the site, that just due to the layout of the site, we only can accommodate 4.4 feet additionally. With lighting, there's a .5 foot candle minimum within the parking area. Due to designing the lighting to avoid the light spillage requirement of .25 foot candles, we just can't accommodate .5 foot candles minimum throughout the parking area.
I have no further questions, Mr. Rodriguez.
Can you orient me towards the entrance and the exit of the site?
Of the site?
Yeah.
Right. So as you're coming on Route One North, or even from the Route 18 approach, there is a little blue jug handle here. The easterly driveway is where you would enter the site, and you can circulate and out on the western side. And that's how the current sites were, right?
The other thing that was in here, I think that was mentioned, was the sanitary, sanitary water source.
Forest main?
Yeah. It said something about just relying on the fact that the capacity of the city's frontage is talking to be able to handle it, that is actually really able to handle all the water usage and the facility.
We've submitted our usages via reports for each water and sewer, and we'd be going for local approvals and then to the Middlesex County Utilities Authority to verify that they do have capacity.
And it's an organic assumption that it will be sufficient, both on both cases?
Yes, but from what we know now, there shouldn't be a problem, but we have to make the applications to be sure.
What type of plants are for the trees on the area under the property?
Plant types, the basics.
Yeah, the trees. My question really goes towards the fact that they're always close to that area, and it can be a little bit tricky when it comes to the site line. So depending upon the vegetation, I figure it's a trick to try to do additional destruction on those circles.
The trees are setback a number of feet, if I were to strike a number of feet from the curb line in the stone handle, if I were to strike the line, you know, this way, you know, from this point on, you'd be able to see the entire jug handle from, basically at the entrance of the jug handle here.
Sure. A manicure or BI may be a loss, maybe a hurdle in lock, so I'm kind of curious if that's going to determine as far as the application.
No, but as long as they're outside of the right-of-way, I don't think they will, they will only have a few. What we do have to design to is do these trees inhibit somebody that's leaving the site from looking back at, yeah, right. So I actually do show that on the plan.
They are provided, you have provided those.
A site distance, yeah.
Yeah, they have sufficient, that's provided.
They're all sit back out of the circle.
They were, they were provided as dimensions were on it, and what you needed to provide was also noted on that as well. So they are there, they are there.
And the soap lines from all the, coming through the circle there as well as exiting the parking lot?
Yeah, the exiting, they show you the tangent, the tangents from that, from that curb right there, and it's sufficient according to highway standards, there are, I already looked at that.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I beg to ask in response to the gentleman's question, the landscaping blend does show those specimens as shade trees there labeled as green vase zelcopas. It's a street tree variety of shade trees.
No great words.
Just following up on the entry and exit question, just being that it's essentially a ramp and a jug handle when you get off of Route One, you know, you're really like, you know, that entrance is, you've got about a second and a half to realize that that's an entrance. Just wondering about the design of that. I know there's probably not much in terms of options we have to do with that.
Yeah, we actually went to the New Jersey Department of Transportation to basically get somewhat of a go-ahead to stick with these driveways as shown, because we're not changing what's there, and they've given us a letter of no interest, meaning we don't have to seek any further permitting at these work today. Another thing I can say, as opposed to the speed limit, I believe, if I'm correct, it's only 20 miles per hour here. I know, yeah, in practical, it doesn't really work that way maybe, but, you know, at that speed limit, it's safe. I mean, that's the, that's the issue.
There's a lot happening in that area.
Yeah, people are in a rush and typically go to two times.
Just on the process for your approvals, do you go for highways first, state highway first, and then you come here, or is it?
No, they're somewhat independent, you just have to get them all, right? You have to get all the permits. But we did in advance of this submit for that.
You don't have to stay.
Right, the app, it's called an access permit, a major access permit.
Yeah, for the record, we have there a letter of no interest stating that this proposal does not change, you know, what the existing conditions are. I actually was going to have Betsy mention that, she's got, she's... I actually was going to have Betsy mention that, she's got, she's got the letter of my traffic. Yes.
Another thing I just wanted to show the board, and I can mark it A two. This is a.
That's what I just called it, signs.
Signs, the proposed signs. So as I mentioned, there's a, we're going to replace the cabinet, the proportion of the pylon sign that's there, and also add a new monument sign at the east of the driveway. The height of this sign is going to be near the existing one, however, it's approximately two feet shorter. So although it does exceed today, the allowable height by ten feet, that's going to be reduced by two feet or so. And the monument sign is, you know, meets all other apartments except for the setback. And this is more of a visual of what the brand and signs look like.
Any other questions? I can move on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. This time I will call Mr. Thomas Dever for testimony.
Can you raise your red hands, state your names, tell your last name, make it clear?
My name is Thomas Dever, D-E-V-E-R.
And do you swear to the truth in this matter?
I do.
So Dever, you are a licensed professional architect, a state new jersey architect?
Yes, sir.
In that capacity, you are familiar with and responsible for the design of the architectural aspects of buildings?
Yes, sir, I am.
Can you give the board then the benefit of your professional qualifications and experience?
I'm a registered architect. I've been registered thirty-two years and largely do hotel work throughout the eastern United States.
Okay. And you've done design work for Hilton?
We have. This project tonight is one of six Hilton Home Two Suites we have in various stages of design or completion.
Could I offer Mr. Dever?
Yep. Maybe I missed this, you are a licensed New Jersey contractor?
Yes, sir.
Then, Mr. Dever, I'm going to, this asks you to run through the architectural aspects of the building, and to the extent that we have exhibits that have not, were not previously in the packet, we'll mark those. And I also believe that you have a smaller version of these that we can hand out to the board.
Yes, I do.
Mark is eight feet on the board.
Are these sets rather than the gigantic boards we're on at Hilton House?
Sure. Just one of those three trees.
Just so we can get on the record, whatever you're showing on the board is the same as what's on the package?
Yes, sir. Okay. Go ahead. I'm going to first show the exterior elevations. Can you see those from up front there? I assume it needs to. The exterior.
You can angle the middle more for the public.
Oh, it's off the left.
It's tough to get the right angle in here.
Good compliment. This building is a custom footprint because of the site and its unique qualities, but it's based on the Hilton Home Two prototype, and the exterior is all Hilton really required exterior finishes. We're looking at the entrance from the roadside of the building. This is fiber-reinforced concrete horizontal boards in the chocolate brown colors. The other features are Home Two Suites distinctive features that actually are required by Hilton, including the beacon, which is a tower here with the, they call it a beam, and a light at the top. So patrons entering for the hotel would go to the left side, which is the main entrance. This board shows that.
You might want to tighten up the one side.
Sorry? You're losing something there? Is that, is that? Thank you. This is the entrance to the hotel. We're working around to the back by Route Eighteen here in this view. This is the southwest corner, looking back to an area which has outdoor grills and a pool patio. That's a little bit better view of that patio area. The hotel has three signs, two of them fourteen feet long, which you see here, and one at the entrance is nine feet long, or nine feet, nine feet four inches. This is the, this is the first floor plan. The hotel has the entrance vestibule, the public spaces and lobby. There are some rooms on the first floor, the back wing. There's a swimming pool, the outside pool deck with the grills, and there's an area here with a fire pit for relaxing. The, as previously said, it's one hundred and nine rooms. The upper floors are all pretty similar and are the guestrooms. These are all suites. These are each of the upper floors. And the roof plan. These are the facades.
I can't see the number. No, I'm the one number we're at there.
Okay.
And if I go to the.
I'm sorry.
I thought we were marking them all as one exhibit. I thought that's what you said.
However, however is best.
You can mark it all as one exhibit? If you could just refer to the page?
Yes.
Because it appears that each of those are from the package.
They are, yes, they're the same as the package, yes.
Just refer to the page number from the plans.
Okay. So the first floor plan is eight, our number A two point zero one, the first floor. And the other plans that we've looked at were two point zero two, the second floor, two point zero three, the third, two point zero four, the fourth, and the roof plan, two point zero five. Now, the two elevation drawings, sheets, A five point zero one, which is, is it a half? And A five point zero two. This building has a mix of seventy-nine king suites in various types and thirty queen-queen suites in various types. There are three signs, two fourteen-foot long and the one at nine feet four long, and that's pretty much it. Anything specific or any questions?
I have other questions for, can you tell me a little bit about the light on the top of the building?
The Hilton Home Two Suites as a thing that they refer to as a signature element. And this is a four-sided glass enclosure that's lit from inside so that it just, it glows gently at night. That's on all Hilton Home Two Suites, it's this element here. And that's a brand identity thing for Hilton.
Before Mr. Dever goes, Mr. Dever, could you give us the gross floor area of the building, please?
The total floor area is sixty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine square feet.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Dever?
Thank you.
At this time, I will call, that's your one question.
Raise your red hand, state your name, tell your last name, make it clear.
Elizabeth Dolan, D-O-L-A-N.
And do you swear to the truth in this matter?
Yes, I do.
Please proceed.
So you are a licensed professional engineer at the state New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
And I think your expertise is strong.
Yes, yes.
In that capacity, you did conduct a traffic study analysis with this site, with this proposal as a grant?
Yes, do they need any more qualifications?
Yeah, I will, secondly, I go in a certain order. Now, would you give the board the benefit of your professional qualifications, basically?
Yes, I have a bachelor's science degree in civil engineering from Rutgers University.
Elizabeth Dolan has touched upon it before.
It's been a while, but I have, yes.
Ms. Dolan, your credentials have not changed anyway since the last time you were before this board?
They have not.
Again, you have conducted a traffic study with regard to this particular.
Yes, I have.
And I would just ask you to go through the methodology that you used, the analysis that you've done, and then provide your conclusions with respect to this, and I may then have a few questions.
Right, sure. And I think that part of the questioning with our engineer had to do with the NJDOT aspects of this because we are within their jurisdictions. So the traffic study, as well as our submission to NJDOT, was based on a series of trip generation projections for the proposed hotel in comparison with the former restaurant. So for this proposed use, we go to the Institute of Transportation Engineers publication, it's called Trip Generation. The Trip Generation manual has trip rates for virtually any land use you can imagine, including hotels that are now called All Suites Hotels, a type of hotel that Home Two Suites is proposing at this location. We look at trip generation projections for the weekday morning peak hour, the weekday evening peak hour, and the Saturday peak hour. So for this use, we're looking at about fifty-eight trips generated by a one-hundred-and-nine-room Suites Hotel. That would be fifty-eight trips, the total of entering and exiting driveway movements in a one-hour period. And the numbers are pretty consistent for this type of use, whether it's the morning peak hour, evening peak hour, or midday Saturday peak hour. For the purposes of our NJDOT evaluation, we compared the trip generation with the former Bennigan's Restaurant. That's classified by NJDOT and the ITE as a high turnover sit-down restaurant. Certainly in the morning, that's not going to generate quite as much as the one-hundred-and-nine-room hotel, but during the weekday evening and Saturday peak hours, the former Bennigan's would generate twice as much traffic as this proposed hotel. So we submitted those calculations to NJDOT, we submitted a copy of the site plan to DOT and explained that we were proposing to maintain those two driveways, provided the calculations, and they in return issued what's called a letter of no interest. It says that we have the right to continue to use the driveways that exist on the ramp for this proposed use in recognition of the trip generation reduction during most of the peak hours. Other component of our traffic study had to do with reviewing the site circulation. Access, of course, was our first issue because of the DOT potential for an access permit. And then you, of course, have heard from our other witnesses, we are short ten parking spaces, but we do have one space per room, and that is traditionally what is provided at hotels like this, one space per room, and I've been handling these types of applications for twenty years, and one space per room is what is typically provided. The ITE also has some data for these types of uses, and they would indicate that the demand is a little bit less than one space per room because the rooms aren't typically all occupied at once. But I feel comfortable with the supply that is proposed despite the fact that we are short in terms of the variance. And just in terms of some of the other types of uses that would be permitted on this site, I looked at the C-five list, and certainly what we're doing now in terms of many land use applications, Wawa's, Quick Check, Seven-Eleven, and other types of convenience uses like the Tim Hortons or Dunkin' with the drive-through and so forth. Those types of uses, offices and medical offices would generate comparable activity to the proposed hotel, but any of those quick serve or fast food, or certainly the Wawa would be generating well in excess of a hundred trips per hour. The Wawa's are three times that. And so certainly from a traffic perspective and the driveway safety issues that were briefly discussed during the engineering testimony, I believe that this is an appropriate use because it's one of the quietest from a traffic generation perspective compared with other uses that would be permitted and that could comfortably fit on this site.
Yeah, I have other questions for Elizabeth? I wanted to ask you, I should answer.
I do.
Does the study take into account the surrounding uses, or is every parcel viewed in, on its own without reference to anything that's going on around? I ask that because car wash, obviously, its model is to stack cars as they go through, which sometimes creates potential for some jam-ups in that access.
On the ramp, right, yeah, because they have a short frontage, too. That's the other nice thing about this, and I guess I will go back to A one, the site plan, is that we have full circulation around the building, so there's nothing impeding a vehicle as they come in, because even the parking is far enough away that one or two vehicles can stack on the driveway and be outside of that ramp if somebody's coming out of one of these closer parking spaces. But we have full circulation, it's a very comfortable design, and again, if there's queuing while vehicles are waiting to get out of the site, that's an onsite issue, it's not creating any off-track. So again, if we were proposing something with a drive-through, DOT would possibly have an interest because they want to make sure that any queuing doesn't impact their ramp. So again, from a traffic perspective and a DOT permitting perspective, this is a well-designed site and will not lead to what is in the code hesitation on the state highway. That is something that DOT does not want, and this design will keep cars moving.
Just a comment on your, the check-in, the entrance, the lobby, towards the.
I guess it's over, it's here, on the eastward side of the site.
Why don't you, Tom, would you point out?
It is on the side by the car.
Right. The other thing on here, too, is you have significantly less, for trip generation pairs, there was significantly less trips during the evening peak hour and the Saturday peak hours. The only thing you actually exceed the restaurant trips would be during morning peak.
During morning peak, and it, right, and that's for Bennigan's. If you had a fast food.
Right.
Those numbers would be higher than the trips for the hotel, correct?
I don't imagine your analysis takes into consideration the fact that, you know, folks that come to this place are almost always coming here for the first time, you know, and that being the nature of the hotel.
Well, I think with today, with GPS and Google Maps and everything, I know whenever I'm traveling somewhere different, I love Google Maps, and then, of course, plug it into your GPS, but also, too, many times you're at the website and there's directions available right on the website when you're making your reservation. So certainly that's a benefit over the Bennigan's back in the eighties when I was at that place.
Do you look at circulation on the ramp itself at all, and the peak hours in particular?
Not in terms of any traffic counts. It's sort of, it is what it is. We're landlocked on the Route Eighteen side because. We're landlocked on the Route Eighteen side because of the ramp, so access has to be configured where it's shown, and it's basically a one-directional flow, so there's not much to analyze. As I said before, it's more about making sure we don't crowd the circulation in the vicinity of those driveways, keep traffic moving on our site.
And DOT didn't make any recommendations for, they just, if I have this correct, they say whether your existing access is sufficient or not sufficient, they don't make any suggested changes to that?
No, and again, sometimes depending upon what the proposed use may be, they may ask for certain modifications because they want everything happening further away, well into the interior of the site. This layout meets their typical requirements, and given that there's really nowhere else to take access, and the fact that we're reducing the traffic during the majority of the peak hours, they said that we're fine to continue using the driveways as they are for this use.
I'm speaking personal experience, it's a pretty dangerous area. There's no, there's no striping that, you have a lot of cars that will end up creating two lanes, but I don't know if there's legally two lanes there, so, and I don't know if that's something that this applicant has the ability to address, but just my personal observation.
Yeah, there's very limited striping, if any, that delineate what might be a shoulder, it's, I think, twenty-four, twenty-six feet, so, yeah, people could try and create two lanes, but it's supposed to function as one.
Mike, just for the record, to supplement what Betsy's saying, I'll just read the quote from the DOT letter, because they emphasized it because they boldened it. This is a non-conforming lot, but the proposed site-generated trips are under the maximum allowable trips of one-hundred-and-thirty-one trips in the AM peak hour, one-hundred-and-thirty-one trips in the PM peak hour, and one-hundred-and-thirty-one trips in the weekend peak hour. And that's why it says, has determined that the proposed one-hundred-and-nine-room Home Two Suite Hotel will not generate a significant increase in traffic, and a new access permit's not required. So they made a specific finding with regard to the trip generation versus what they considered to be the maximum, though it is under what the state considers the maximum that should be generated from this site. And that was the point of the letter, it's important for us to know that.
Just one other question, too, is to say hypothetically, you know, say as a, one of the, one of the uses that would potentially be, that would say like a Wawa. Well, if you have it off the top of your head, what sort of, on a trip generation, that would, that would be, I'd be?
Wawa's are seeing in the morning peak hour upwards of two hundred vehicles, so that's four hundred trips, two hundred in, two hundred out. That's a typical Wawa with gas, they're just under six thousand square feet. A conventional, like, 7-Eleven without gas, that'd be about a hundred twenty-five.
Significantly higher, okay.
Yes, significantly higher.
Is there a designated parking area for employees, and how many cars would be in that area?
That I don't know.
We can have, at some point, we can get the answer to that question. Generally, they're not, they're not.
Designated, and if they, if they are, they're the most inconvenient and furthest from the building.
That's what my question was.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks a lot, Betsy. At this time of the call, Mr. Kenyon Hughes, for testimony.
Raise your right hand, state your name, square, last name.
Kenyon Hughes, H-U-G-H-E-S.
And do you swear to the truth in this matter?
I do.
Kenyon, you are a licensed professional planner of the State of New Jersey, is that correct?
Yes, I am.
In that capacity, you were asked to do an analysis of the variances that were being requested this evening, is that true?
Yes.
And I assume that you've had an opportunity to do that, and can provide, assuming a justification for those variances?
Yes, I'd be happy to.
May I ask you specifically, on the issue, went through your analysis for?
Chairman, I may. Mr. Hughes has been here on a number of occasions, has an expert in the area of planning. Have your credentials changed since the last time you were before this?
They have not. Thank you. Yeah, so from a planning perspective, what I would emphasize at the outset here is just really the unique nature of this property. It's a, it's a piece of property that was essentially created by the jug handle associated with the interchange of Route Eighteen and Route One. So that creates a number of physical factors here that we have to address in terms of complying with the zoning ordinance. First of all, as you can see, it's a very irregularly shaped piece of property. It has two front yards along both Route One and also Route Eighteen. Along Route Eighteen, as Ms. Dolan pointed out, we're essentially landlocked, which presents some challenges in terms of access. And, you know, also, just, this is a permitted use within the zone, but I think it was just stated that among the permitted uses for this particular property, given those factors and given the access limitations due to the landlocked nature along Route Eighteen, this becomes a very appropriate use for this particular property. Having said that, I think some of these physical factors here provide a basis for a C-one justification for the front yard, side yard setback variances that we're requesting, along with the impervious coverage. I mentioned that there's two front yards, that is a key factor here. One hundred feet is required for both of those. We have seventy-two-point-five feet along Route One and fifty-eight-point-seven feet along Route Eighteen. Another point is the fact that the actual property line is somewhat removed or set back from the right-of-way of the road. Of course, we have this great separation along Route Eighteen, but even along Route One, the actual property line is another ten to fifteen feet back from the actual right-of-way. So the visual perception of someone experiences, experiencing this property or driving past it, the setback is greater than it appears to, what's essentially an imaginary line, which is the property line, as one experiences it, driving past. So there are substantial setbacks provided along both sides of the building, and here we have the C-one hardship justification, again, due to the unique shape of the property having two front yards. As for the minimum side yard setbacks, fifty feet is required for one, and a hundred feet is the requirement for combined. The combined setback, we're at ninety-nine-point-seven feet, whereas a hundred feet is required, that's clearly a de minimis deviation from the requirement. On the east side of the building, the setback is actually exceeded by sixteen feet, that's along the Car Wash side. And then on the west side of the building, it's really just this very limited area that infringes on the setback. This is adjacent to the gas station property. So, you know, given the overall shape here, the fact that the shape really dictated the layout and configuration of this building, in the context of the overall project, this is a very minimal deviation, and it's one, again, that's due to the irregular shape of the property, which supports a C-one justification for that variance. In terms of coverage, first of all, it's important to understand that the building itself is compliant in terms of its overall height and the floor area ratio here, so while the coverage is being exceeded, and we do have that deviation from the side yard setback, the building itself is not one that's overly imposing or larger than what's actually permitted in terms of its mass. But the impervious coverage is increasing from the existing condition of eighty-one percent to eighty-six percent. As you heard from Mr. Rodriguez, the mitigating factor here is the introduction of the pervious pavement, which essentially offsets that increase and addresses concerns about stormwater runoff on the site. So again, I believe there is a C-one justification if that's an undersized property with an irregular shape, and mitigating any potential impacts with the introduction of pervious pavement. In addition, and I would just say for those three variances, in terms of the negative criteria, certainly no substantial detrimental impacts to the public good or impairment of the zone plan, given the unique factors on the site. As for parking spaces, one-hundred-and-nineteen spaces are required. The proposal is to provide one-hundred-nine, which is one per, here, one per room, which is exactly what a hotel like this would be looking for. This is sufficient for guests, employees, and visitors. Here in New Brunswick, we have the benefit of substantial public transportation, so it's conceivable that folks will travel here by public transportation for a lengthy stay in the hotel. They may be, you know, attending meetings at some local corporations in town or the university, certainly taking Uber or other forms of transportation to get back and forth as possible. But having said that, one-for-one is exactly what a hotel of this nature is looking for. So even if the majority of customers are driving, there's more than sufficient parking on site, and that's supported by the ITE data that Ms. Dolan referenced. As for the signage, the wall and freestanding signs are actually conforming in terms of size and number. The relief that's being sought here is just for the setbacks. Along the Route One ramp frontage, the ground sign is set back five feet from the property line, whereas twenty feet is required. In my opinion, this is a classic C-two justification in that this is a better alternative than setting the sign back twenty feet. It's really important to have this driveway adequately signed and visible, given the traffic situation on the ramp, so that the site can be safely and orderly accessed. So in my opinion, again, five feet is better than twenty feet essentially, which supports the C-two justification there. And then as for the freestanding sign along the Route Eighteen frontage, this is an existing sign, it's actually becoming smaller. The proposal is to simply reuse that existing pylon and introduce some signage to make this hotel use visible from Route Eighteen. So the setback, while from the property line is a deviation from the requirement, in reality, it's actually substantially set back from the actual Route Eighteen roadway. So in both cases, I think there's a C-two justification to support these setbacks for those two signs. And for those two C-two justifications, I would just point out that both promote purposes A, G, and H of the municipal land use law in terms of ensuring good visibility and safe orderly access to what is an appropriate located hotel use, and likewise with these two, no substantial detrimental impacts to the public good or impairment of the zone plan. Finally, there were a few waivers being requested, I'll just touch on those very briefly, under the municipal land use law. The test is whether the requirement is impracticable, given the particulars of the property, and whether the proposal is reasonable and meets the general purpose and intent of the requirement. Each of these, I think, were touched on by Mr. Rodriguez, but just to briefly recap, street trees required along Route Eighteen. It's not possible to provide the full amount of eight or nine due to the location of the sanitary sewer line, but we have maximized the potential for street trees along that frontage, is my understanding, but the sewer line is somewhat of a constraint there to full compliance. Parking lot landscaping, again, this is an undersized lot, it is irregularly shaped. There's really not many opportunities within the actual parking area for landscaping due to the size and shape of the lot. However, there is landscaping provided around the building, and actually around the entire parking field, as well as the trees that are being introduced along the Route One ramp and Route Eighteen. So obviously, for those of you familiar with this site today, it's going to be a substantial upgrade in terms of the overall appearance, and the landscaping is a huge part of that. The loading space is not permitted within the front yard. This, again, goes to the fact that there are two front yards here, so it's not practicable to actually comply with that, but the size is adequate for this particular user, and my understanding is that this was provided based on some dialogue with the technical advisory committee, and the operator feels that it's going to be sufficient to serve the facility. And then finally, there's a five-feet buffer strip required, four-point-seven feet proposed. This is really just a de minimis exception from that requirement. So to summarize, the hotel is a permitted use in the C-five zone. Given the shape and the access situation here, it's a particularly appropriate use for this property. As for the requested relief, there is a C-one justification for the setback in pervious coverage variances due to the size and shape of the property, and then the other C variances are justified on a C-two basis. In this case, there is no potential for substantial detrimental impacts to the public good or impairment of the zone plan, and I do believe in each case, the deviations are actually meeting the spirit and intent of each of those requirements. So with that said, I think the applicant satisfies the requisite criteria in the municipal land use law for each of the deviations it is seeking.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions, Robert. Mr. Patterson, just one quickly. Under C-five, what are the other, what are, can you give us, what are some of the other things that are possible for the site?
Karen. Off the top of my head, the C-five is intended to be a highway commercial kind of thing you would see on a major highway, so hotels, restaurants, retail uses, office, it's limited out there. The type of, the same types of uses you see up and down Route One, are the types of uses that would be committed here, because this is a, a Route One.
So any other application would be, help the site, right, you know, basically the same property, same straits and property has, amount of what it is that we, that we look at there.
Yeah, well, I, there's a lot of constraints on the property, which the applicant has been discussing, in that it is constrained on both sides by two existing uses that don't seem to be going anyplace. You have two different state highways on each side, the site sort of is what it is.
So although we have like a five acre minimum, that doesn't matter here because of the site, because of the nature of the site itself?
Yeah, they're not likely to get the two adjoining properties, probably if you put the two adjoining properties together, this, I still don't think you have five acres, so you, you can't do that thing, that's why the applicants are having hardship.
No, I understand, I understand, right.
Yeah, the types of uses out there are car-oriented with a type of use that you might see in a downtown area. This is a site that is going to be accessed probably almost exclusively by people in cars. I know there was some comment about, you know, some people taking mass transit and so forth, like everybody in the room knows, there's no bus stop there, there's no one ramp, no plans for such, and it's not a great place to, I imagine, you'll probably get a couple of people walking there, but not, not a whole lot. This site is, it's on Route One, it's car-oriented.
It's an island.
Yeah.
I certainly didn't imply that anyone was walking here, but the idea of taking the train and maybe getting an Uber to the hotel and getting dropped off, that's really, this is not.
Bike exchange.
Been there, done that.
It is isolated.
This is a maximum thirty-day stay, correct?
Under, for the extended stay hotel, the general rule of thumb is thirty-day max.
So that's the clientele you're expecting, yeah, for extended?
Yeah, anywhere up to that. I mean, I, I think the, the study that they looked at, they have, I know Hilton has a tiered rate schedule, and they anticipate you might get up to a thirty-day in that tiered, but, you know, it's probably, you know, you get a, you get a few of those, but most likely it's somewhere in the middle.
Questions?
That completes our presentation.
Any other, uh, subjects, your counsel?
Yeah, I'm way up there.
Come up, give your name and get it swarmed, and if you can speak loudly so we can hear you.
Joseph Gattens Jr., sixty-five South Pennington Road in Brunswick, New Jersey.
And do you swear to the truth in this matter? Do you swear to the truth in this matter?
I swear to the, or ask the right questions, I hope. I have a lot of problems with this whole thing. One problem is, we'll start with the sign. Are they going to put it on this side of the driveway or that side of the driveway? First, I need the answer. Because if you put it on this side, you are going to affect their ability to make an entrance into their property. If you put it over here, you're obscuring the driveway when somebody's coming, they may not see the driveway. I've lived in this area forty-six years, the whole life in New Brunswick, so these problems I see every day. The other problem is over here, well, first I'm going to ask, where are they going to take deliveries?
Do you want to get an answer to where the sign's going first?
Oh, they never gave me an answer. Who's going to answer? Who's going to answer?
Might watch, should specifically show the location of that.
Where's the exact location of the monument at?
Monument.
The monument sign is this black rectangle that you see here?
Okay, all your landscaping may block it, it may not be visible. Coming around here, you're coming around off a highway that's fifty-five, fifty miles an hour right here, you're slowing down in a ramp, you're going to see that sign with your landscaping?
Yes, actually, if you were to strike the line, you'd see that approximately near the exit driveway, you could start to see the beginning of the sign, and technically the speed limit here is twenty miles an hour.
No, it isn't.
I mean, posted sign, posted speed limit.
No, there's no posted sign here, is there?
There's a posted sign right near the gas station, actually.
Really?
Yeah, and it's yellow with black letter.
It's a caution sign. Ah, it's not a traffic sign, it's only caution.
Ramp twenty miles per hour.
Okay, that answers that one. Where are they going to take deliveries for the food, the breakfast place?
There's an existing ten-by-fifty-foot space that you can see that's delineated here, and that's where that box truck will park, yes.
If there's a vehicle parked right here, how is a delivery truck going to negotiate that turn? How much space do you have here?
We've at least twenty-four feet, and we've already submitted a circulation plan for a forty-foot long vehicle.
How big are the parking lots?
That's not allowed for tractor-trailers, is that correct? The only thing that would not, that that circulation plan would not provide for would be tractor-trailers, is that correct?
Yeah, we don't anticipate having deliveries from tractor-trailers.
How big are the parking spots?
Nine feet by eighteen.
And you're going to get a hundred and nine parking spaces in there, when the previous restaurant with all this backspace did not have a hundred and nine spaces in the whole place?
I'm not sure how many spaces they had, but I mean, it's on our plan, and they mentioned them either there.
I understand. The restaurant only took about this much space, and all this back here, and they still didn't have a hundred and nine spaces.
I can show you what, I only have a half-size copy with me, however, I don't know, but this is what the plan said that was submitted to the board previously, if I can just show you. This is the existing conditions, that's what people say today. I'm not sure how many parking spaces were here, but you can see that they have just more aisles than we do, we only have one aisle around the building. They have two aisles in the back and one in the front, they didn't double over the front parking bay like we did here, so we set our building back in a way that we can accommodate two rows of parking, and we only have one aisle around the building. So I mean, this eats up a lot of space, actually, this is a twenty-four-foot aisle, this eats up a lot of parking space.
Yeah, the other thing, I'm not, maybe you can answer this, but how tall is the building now, Dave?
Below fifty feet in height, forty.
No, it can't be.
The architect answered the question.
Sure.
Never said how tall it's going to be?
He testified to that earlier.
No, you never said how tall it was going to be?
Forty-six feet.
Forty-six point nine to par.
Right, that's correct, forty-six feet angel.
This is just a simple, just for the rainwater, how is the drainage set up on the property?
Oh, it maintains existing drainage patterns. Today, the high point of the site is along the northerly side, and the runoff that, you know, gets, runoff that drains from the property.
You're not changing the elevation of the property?
We are regrading the property, however, we are maintaining this similar drainage patterns, meaning what rain falls on the site today gets collected at the same point that it does, will be collected at the same point it does tomorrow.
Swaggeron, JDR, L-I-N-G.
And you swear to the truth in this matter?
Beg your pardon?
Swear to the truth in this matter?
Yes.
My concern is. I didn't get your first one, I apologize. Robert, thank you.
My concern is not whether or not you're going to have nice rugs in the hotel, I'm sure Hilton will make sure of that. My concern is that, I'm also a resident of Rutgers Village, as are some of my children and grandchildren who are driving. Are any of you, are anyone here, does anyone here live in Rutgers Village? Any board members, two, three? Okay, so you're familiar with the circle.
For the record, I probably live closer than you do, but I don't live in Rutgers Village.
We're going into the assumption that the C5, is that what it's called, commercial zones? Is it was a good decision when it was made? And I submit that I think it was a terrible decision when it's made, and putting in anything in that area right now is going to be a tremendous traffic disaster. What were the hours of operation of the Bennigans that was there before?
They were open at ten for employees.
At ten o'clock, so it was pretty much after rush hour traffic?
Exactly.
All right, and was it, was it a fast food place?
No.
So it was a dinner place? So people who went there were more likely to stay there for dinner, for drinks, or whatever it was, and not, I know there's a lot going on here, a lot of questions being made about the alternatives, such as a fast food or a 7-Eleven type of operation, which of course would be a worse alternative than what has been presented here, but I'm not so sure that the alternative is good either. First of all, you have a hundred and nine units, and you have a hundred and nine parking spots? How many employees will this hotel have?
In the site, approximately fifteen to eighteen, a total employee.
Fifteen to eighteen maximum?
In anticipation of questions as regard to management, I do have with us this evening Mr. Derek Sylvester, who is representative of the management company called Creek Hotels. Since there may be some other management questions, what I'd like to do is, maybe Derek can come up with some more, and he can answer management questions.
Raise your hand, state your name, spell your last name for me, please.
Derek Sylvester, last name is S-Y-L-V-E-S-T-E-R.
And you swear to the truth in this matter?
I did.
Let me give just some pre-questions for Derek. Derek, what's the name of the management company that is, will be involved in management here?
Gulf Creek Hotels.
And you're representative of Gulf Creek?
I'm one of the partners of Gulf Creek Hotels, yes.
And you're familiar with the anticipated management and operation of this particular Hilton, is that correct?
We are, we run nine, we currently operate ten Hiltons and hotels similar to this in New Jersey and Pennsylvania.
So there'll probably, I guess, be a series of questions you may have about management, so if you can be available to answer them, and perhaps answer this gentleman's first question, which is, at any particular time, how many employees would be on the site?
We expect between six and twelve, fourteen hotel employees per shift, essentially, on a maximum shift.
Maximum would be twelve, yeah, and would you be bussing these employees in, or would they drive their own cars?
For the most part, we, they will drive their own cars, or they'll get dropped off, and sometimes they'll come in with a group of them together, they'll get dropped off together.
With a carpool?
With a carpool situation, yes.
So we're working on the assumption that we are not going to have any more than a hundred and nine guests at the hotel, and possibly less than that will drive?
We think we'll average about seventy, seventy-five percent occupancy. Our hope is that on certain nights, we will have, we will be in capacity, certainly, but we also, we typically, on a weekend, we might get three rooms out of one car, because they're all staying, you know, they're staying in different rooms, but they're driving together.
So that's the assumption we're making, is, the point I'm making is, the assumption is that a hundred and nine car spaces are not going to be used?
That's correct.
Could they possibly be used by residents?
If resident, if non-hotel-related peoples park there?
No, 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 by residents of the hotel. Is it possible that you could fill the whole hotel with a hundred and nine residents?
We typically don't see.
With a hundred and nine?
It's possible, we typically do not see that.
What would you do with the, where would the employees park?
We'd, in all likelihood, we have employees park at a remote lot and drive them in or drop them off, but honestly, we've never had that problem in some other hotels.
But it's possible, okay. So it seems that it would be better if you had more parking spaces, I would assume. Is that correct?
I think we have.
In case of that possibility, that you said was possible.
I think we have sufficient parking spaces, honestly, I do.
We're talking about benign traffic problems because of this particular hotel, as opposed to what, as opposed to a Wawa or something like that? Is that the assumption we're making here?
Yes.
And we're, does everyone, does anyone, anyone who's given a presentation here work for the township?
The city.
For the city, yeah.
Nobody, none of my workers is.
Okay, so they're essentially all working for the franchisee?
Correct.
Okay, that's.
They're professionals that are hired to provide expert testimony associated with aspects of the site.
Right, so they're getting paid by the franchisee, I get it. Is a liquor license going to come with this hotel?
No.
The Bennigan's liquor license is not being sold, excuse me, with the hotel, but there will be a restaurant area?
No, it's not a restaurant, it's a breakfast area. You know, most hotels of this type, they have continental breakfasts.
Red Roof Inn, whatever, I get you. So it's going to be primarily just for the residents? You know, only for the residents? And the DOT, you said that the DOT said this particular structure on this particular site meant their approval?
Yes, that there would be no significant increase in traffic, that the traffic generated by is used would follow the allowable limits, and that the driveways that exist can be used for this proposed.
But there's been, you said that there was no, you did no traffic, how did you put it? You did no traffic counts?
Correct.
So you're working on assumptions?
We're working on estimates developed using the methodology and data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is what is required.
For a site that is very similar to this, in other words, one that is coming, you have traffic, and whether or not it's a twenty mile an hour zone, we all know that traffic coming off of Route 1, anybody who lives in the village knows that traffic coming off of Route 1 is being tailgated by the traffic that wants to stay on Route 1, and you've got buses and everything else coming around that corner, it's difficult to come around that corner twenty miles an hour, especially when you have a gas station on the one side, and you have a car wash on the other side, and the car wash is, it's even difficult to see traffic coming. Anyone who's ever had their cars washed at that particular site knows that that little planter that they have there, depending on where you are, you're being let out, you can't see that traffic that's coming, and it's coming quickly, even at twenty miles an hour, it's dangerous. And whether or not this site is going to be a reasonable traffic increase, as you say it will be, any traffic increase is going to be terrible. Now, these are going to be commuters, these are going to be added commuters to J&amp;J's, Rutgers, as you say? Well, I mean, they're probably not coming to visit this hotel for the amusement park in the area, right? So likely, I mean, you opened, you said that they would probably benefit J&amp;J and Rutgers and what have you, you'd have long-term stays there. So these people would be traveling at the highest traffic hours, probably, during the day, in the morning, leaving to go to J&amp;J or Rutgers, and coming back in the afternoon, when the traffic is heaviest.
Well, I think the purpose of doing the counts and use the estimates that.
There were no counts.
I didn't mean counts, excuse me. That the estimates that are used by our traffic consultant look to the PAM and PM hours based upon the use, so the numbers that Ms. Dolan indicated, take into consideration those things that you've just stated.
The numbers that Ms. Dolan, and correct me if I'm wrong, the numbers that Ms. Dolan stated are obviously not factual, they're a guess at that.
They're not a guess, they're based upon a whole series of experience and studies and criteria.
With this particular site?
Used around the United States. No, not for that.
With a site like this, because this is an unusual site. This is not, we talked about, you talked about hotels like this on a major highway, this is not on a major highway. This is on a jug handle.
The overall point that we're making is, this is a permitted use.
Oh, I understand that.
A whole series of permitted uses.
We, I think we all understand.
We asked Ms. Dolan to look at those uses in order to be able to compare them to other permitted uses that could potentially be here, including what was there already the Bennigans, and to show you and to convince the board that this is about as a benign a use that you could possibly put on that site, considering all the, right, considering all the.
Yeah, we truly, honestly, yeah. Is this a site that, I mean, does the city need this ratable? Do they need the money from this lot? Or would it not be more, a better use of that lot to make it, I don't know, to make it a planter? And make it safer?
I think the question to that type of advocacy, we, the property. And the applicant has a right to be developed under the existing land use law. If the city wanted to come in and condemn it and take it for a park, that's the city's determination, but the applicant's not, you can't ask the applicant that.
I'm not asking you, I'm asking the board.
The applicant's here because it's got rights.
I understand that, and I do too, as a homeowner in the area, and having children in the area that drive that every day, and a wife.
It's a valid issue that you have.
Thank you.
It's not something that this planning board can address in this application, and that's the point that I'm trying to make to you. The applicant.
I'd like to hear, if that's true, if that's true, sir, okay, I understand your position, okay, you're getting paid by the franchisee as well, all right? So I will ask the board, and if that's what they tell me, then I'll accept that.
Chairman, ma'am?
Yes.
There was an objection to the question. I believe the basis of the objection was essentially that it's irrelevant, it's also beyond the scope of the jurisdiction of this board to opine about what the city's ratables may or not be, and what the needs may be of the city. This is a board that looks at the variances that are presented in the application, and makes a determination based on the municipal land use law, whether the variances can be granted under the criteria established in the municipal land use laws, the planer testified to be relevant.
I may ask, the question I'm asking is this, it seems to many of us, anybody who uses that circle, anybody who lives in Rutgers Village, it's a horrible, it's not on a major highway. Bennigan's was a mistake, the car wash was probably a mistake, but it's already there, but to put another institution there, whether it's a hotel with limited supposedly, or what's benign increased traffic, as they say, or a Wawa, it doesn't matter. On that particular site, it doesn't belong. It's a, it's a, it's not on a major highway, you don't have a decent traffic flow. Getting in and out is going to be dangerous, especially during the hours when the people who are staying there are traveling to J&amp;J or to Rutgers. to Rutgers University or to any of the other businesses within the area. It's dangerous and it's going to make the circle more dangerous. It's going to make the traffic pattern more dangerous. And if any of you have children who live in the village or at driving age, God bless you and God help you, because I have children and grandchildren in the area. It's a bad idea and whether or not I have I have the right to say that right now, given the the franchisee's, you know, ability to be here or legal right to be here, that's fine. But I don't agree necessarily with the DOT description of the benign increased traffic, not on this particular site. That may be true in other sites, but I'd like to know if they've ever done a sample of traffic, given a location as peculiar and particular as this one is. Can you, ma'am, Ms. Dolan?
Well, there's two different things that we're talking about. One is how much traffic does a typical hotel like this generate? And then we're talking about the specifics of the location. The IT manual has samples of counts from this style hotel in various locations and based upon the number of rooms, they develop a rate per room and that's how we estimate 58 trips during the evening peak hour, Saturday peak hour. The same holds true for the Bennigan's. The IT manual has a particular category for that style of restaurant, independent of what street it's on, is what's the typical amount of driveway activity in a peak hour? So Bennigan's would do twice what this will do during the peak hour.
Would be twice more than that, yes.
Then the particulars of the driveway location, the roadway system, that's where sometimes we'll do a traffic impact analysis, but since we're reducing the amount of traffic from the former use and because the engineer has ensured that the plantings, the signage will not interfere with the site triangle and because we really have no other places to access, we've taken into account the safety factors, the visibility, that's what the site plan has to be designed to address so that in the particular setting that we find ourselves on a ramp that connects two state highways, the visibility is provided, the signage is provided, and when I talked earlier about the design of our site so that it allows traffic to come in, those are the safety aspects. It's not a traffic impact or traffic count versus trip generation. It's what is the anticipated driveway volume and have the driveways and the landscaping been designed to grow safely and efficiently?
Well, first of all, as I mentioned, as was mentioned before, the hours of operation of the restaurant that was there before was not a problem for the morning traffic. Secondly, the weekend traffic is not necessarily a problem. It's going to be the daily traffic in the mornings and the evenings and that's going to be a problem. It's going to be an increased problem. 58 more cars or plus employees is going to be dangerous. I don't know what else to say. I assume that this is probably going to be a done deal. This is my first time presenting in front of here and I think it's a bad idea. I think the C5 designation for this particular lot was a mistake long ago and to take another facility on is just continuing that same mistake in this particular area. Love to see them on Route One. Sears is probably going to be going billy up in a couple of years anyway, so that's even a bigger lot for you. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Can you raise your hand, state your names, spell your last name, please?
Maritasee T A S Y. I lived in Rutgers Village for 37 years and I can tell you that the traffic has greatly increased since Bennigan's was there. Every morning I have to deal with the traffic. It's horrendous. You're dealing with the exit off of the Tiger Mart and then you're going to be now dealing with another exit going into the hotel. It's going to make it a nightmare. If this is a done deal, what I would ask the planning board to consider is, is there something that can be done to help the people of Rutgers Village? Because we're the ones that are going to be most adversely affected by this, this hotel. You know, people are making two lanes. There's barely two lanes. There's buses coming through there. There's tractor trailers coming through there. It's a nightmare. I mean, please consider something that is going to make it easy for us if this is a done deal. Can you expand that area? Can you make it wider? Is there anything that can be done to save us from the nightmare that's going to exist once this hotel goes up? And I'm sure it's going to be. And as Bob mentioned, you also have the car wash and I have pulled out that car wash. It is so dangerous there. You have people coming off of Route One. You have people coming out of the Tiger Mart. Now you're going to be pulling into the hotel, then you have the car wash. I mean, it's crazy. I mean, it's a really quick turn there and people do go really fast in the morning. I'm sitting there for a while hoping somebody's going to let me go because I'm heading towards Biscata Way every morning. So this is the reality and I would just ask, you know, you're a planning board. Can you do something to help us? Please consider it. Thank you.
Jim, Ms. Tasey's sponsor. The city's pretty constrained on this, but this is a state highway. It's NJ DOT jurisdiction. NJ DOT has made a number of improvements in that area over the last few years. I think a lot of the people out there, I can see them shaking their head, shaking my toe as to whether they are improvements down there and exactly what they, what they do. So the city's, it's very limited as to what the city can do. We can't, our DPW and engineering departments can't go down there and widen the road and so forth. It has to go through DOT. I think the city's, when DOT has come through with plans, we have always tried to impress upon them the need to prove that make it better for the residents down there, but that's a difficult thing to do. There's lots of different pressures that DOT has on the nest of the things they're trying to address with their road designs and so forth. On the other hand here, I think as Mr. Ito was saying, I mean, this is, this is an existing site. It's a privately owned site. The applicant has a right to development in some manner. They're proposing something that is permitted here and it's not the board's role to go, it's outside the voice jurisdiction to say it should go be acquired by the city for something and, you know, I mean, making that open space a park, that's probably not the best idea if you don't want like an attractive nuisance like that, but it might attract, you know, some kids going out there to play soccer or something like that. It is a difficult site. I don't think anyone disagrees with that. It's what the board has to look at, what the applicant has to propose is, given the site and the conditions there, is this an appropriate use? And that's what you're here to consider tonight.
And Mr. Patterson, just to be clear, any conditions that the planning board could impose on the approval constraining to the area contained within the site plan, is that correct?
Taken within the site plan and, as Mr. Ito confirmed, related to the variances they're requesting. It is a permitted use, but the variances they're requesting mostly have to do with the setback of signs and so forth. Some of them are just existing condition. The lot's not going to get any bigger. It's not going to get any wider. It's not going to get any deeper. They have a parking variance that they are requesting. They've made their case as to whether it's justified or not and that's what the board has to evaluate, whether that parking is sufficient for the size of the hotel that they're going to put on there, given its location and so forth.
Can you raise your hand, state your names, spell your last name, please?
Joseph Katniss III, C A T A N E S E.
And then you swear to tell the truth in this matter? Do you swear to tell the truth in this?
Yes. Well, one, my first question was, is when we discussed the parking, is how large are the handicap spots? Are they set up for van with the side now? All right, that was my other question. Second question is.
Just because I'm not wrong, the answer to that was yes.
My second question, is this going to be your standard style construction for home to by Hilton?
I believe that was testified to. They're using the prototypical.
All right, is extra fire hydrants and the has a study for bringing in New Brunswick's two tower trucks, which are not the most maneuverable vehicles?
All of these applications, when they go through a technical review, are always reviewed for those fundamentals.
All right, what's the term? You said this was 24 feet here?
I didn't say anything.
Well, one of you, the individuals said this was 24 feet here, that they need 36 feet. I happen to know that because I know the firefighters and I know its turning radius. Second question is the peak times. What are considered peak times?
Generally, one hour between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning on a weekday, one hour between 4:00 and 6:00 on a weekday and midday Saturday sometime between 11:00 and 2:00.
Okay, as a person who was born, lived in this area and lived there my entire life, that peak time is from 6:00, 6:30 in the morning to 10 o'clock in the afternoon, I mean, in the morning and from approximately 3:30 when the schools are getting out to 7:30 because that is the escape for people from Route One northbound to get over to the tower center where the existing Hilton is. So the, a study that is on theoreticals and guesstimates, because that's all it is, is now invalidated in my opinion because no one took their time to see when the actual traffic is heavy there, because there is one thing that I don't think anybody's taken into account. The traffic problem here is if you spread this map out at 7:30 to 8:30, 8:45 in the morning, that traffic is sitting a good three quarters of a mile here.
Yep.
It's the same way in the evening and like I said, I know the firefighters, is they have told me that in the morning with that traffic, that is now going to have traffic possibly added to it, when they get a call, New Brunswick does mutual aid because they can't get the fire truck from this side of New Brunswick to here and East Brunswick comes into Rutgers Village because they can't get the New Brunswick trucks in. So this may be a perfectly valid variance, but it is adding traffic. It's adding a difficulty. Just judging by your statements here, because a question is, is there going to be a barrier separating the Exxon completely from this site?
In other words, can someone drive through?
No, could somebody park here and walk around now into the Exxon as the way this site plan has been laid out? Because that is one of the things people who don't want to deal with the suicidal condition of trying to get in and out of here, will come in here, park, even when Bennigan's was active, park here to walk into the Exxon because as crazy as it is to pull out here, it's three times better than trying to pull out of there. And like, the other thing was is Hilton, I looked it up, why would the franchisee of Hilton have to pay Hilton back? Because it's home to by Hilton, they own. So the information I just took off the Hilton website is incorrect?
I don't know what you looked at, sir. All I can tell you.
I went to Hilton's.
That the applicant will own.
Website that says that they own it. They franchisee it out, but they physically own it. The people who are operating it are like a McDonald's.
That's not the case here. The testimony is otherwise. I'm not going to repeat the testimony.
Testimony can be whatever it says. It doesn't mean that you're telling, you're saying the truth is just believed by you.
Not. I'm not going to argue with you.
Right.
The testimony is the applicant will own the facility, has entered into a franchise agreement with Hilton, a 20-year franchise agreement in order to have the benefit of the franchise marketing, the franchise.
Thank you. You just said that to me. What I said is it's a franchisee to Hilton. So how would a person franchising have to pay Hilton back? They'll just get another franchisee.
I'm not sure what is you confusing.
My point is, is I give it, is this is going to be built and I give it five years before it turns into Section 8 housing, which is what we know is going to happen.
I know.
George, your right hand.
State names, but I'll let them.
George Sheehan. S H E E H A N. Can you tell me owns this property right now?
I actually know of the owner of the property.
Company called Thassos Island Realty, LSE.
Island Realty?
Thassos Island Realty.
Do you plan on buying it from them or?
We're the contract purchaser.
Contract purchaser. Are these entrances going to be curved like this? Are they going to be straight coming in?
They're going to be as existing.
As existing?
Engineer can answer your questions on this.
Yeah. So when you come in here, you're going to come like this and when you exit, it's going to go like that?
That's right.
That was historically a major problem with Bennigan's because people would come around here, they would see the Bennigan's sign, they would actually try to make the turn into, and also many people would go out of here, which caused big problems, as you can imagine.
That is the point of angling, angling the driveways in this fashion is to prevent, prevent that from happening.
That's if people have common sense, but a lot, I've seen that happen. I've seen a car flip over right here because of the problem of somebody trying to turn in here and the person coming off here literally flipped over. This needs to be marked very clearly, exit, and this needs to be marked very clearly, entrance, this one more specifically, but it was a problem with Bennigan's and I foresee that happening again. Just, I really do. Now, can I see the first floor? Is this the first floor? May I?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, so we have a little outdoor patio over here with grills and whatnot. Is this accessible to the public?
No.
And how do you prevent?
Accessible, I'm sorry. It's not for public use.
But how would you prevent the public from coming here, using your grills and your patio, using your swimming pool, joining you for breakfast here in the oasis and grabbing, taking advantage of your grab and go food?
Well, I hope my management company hasn't answered that.
I hope so too, because it's a big problem.
We monitor those facilities. I mean, obviously, you know, we can't monitor everybody, but if someone's walking out of the street and we see them headed towards some area that they're not supposed to belong to, we'll ask for their guest room key and if they don't have a guest room key, less than a lead. We typically have not had problems like that. Obviously, you know, you're concerned about it, so the extra village, we try to make sure that does not.
Yes, there was a very nice hotel complex right across the street. It was called Howard Johnson's way back in the day. It is now a combination of a Motel 6 and a Red Roof Inn. The police and fire are called there no less than 10, 12 times a month. There are typically several overdoses every month. Those people constantly walk across the roadway to go to the Tiger Mart, to walk around looking like they're buying and lifting whatever they can. And I have no doubt they will be coming for your free complimentary breakfast, your grab and go food, your outdoor patios and your swimming. And.
Thank you for the word.
Yes, I am very serious and I'm very concerned and I also am concerned about the 20-year franchise and if you get sick and tired of all of your foot traffic company and you decide to sell, I agree with Mr. Katniss that it may just be a matter of time before this becomes a hotel that accommodates people from the state, Section 8, convicted three time child molesters, which were put at the Howard Johnson's, and that kind of clientele. And we really don't need that at the front of our neighborhood, along with the traffic were built, and in that plan originally, there was supposed to be a ramp off of Route 18 into that tower center. That did not happen. Our mayor took a payment in lieu of that ramp, and that was the beginning of the major problems of the people cutting through, coming through the neighborhood down Burnett Street to the Hilton. So maybe we could all work with East Brunswick and the DOT, and see if we can get that traffic going down 18 right into a nice little jug handle into the Hilton where it's really trying to go anyway. But this Hilton could be a problem with the foot traffic, and it is a concern as to how long you're going to be able to tolerate them. And with that said, I'll see you for breakfast.
Try to read your right hand, state your name, spell your last name for me, please.
Charles Cradaville, K-R-A-T-O-V-I-L.
I do.
Good evening once again, members of the board, many of my questions have already been addressed, I'll try to be quick. Is the applicant considering applying for a long-term tax exemption for the property?
No.
What specifically will the MCUA do to evaluate this? Are they going to have to, are they going to have a hearing on this, or is this just kind of a rubber stamp kind of application with regard to the sewerage?
I don't know the answer.
Questions about the-
MCUA.
It was alluded to that the MCUA would have to sign off on the usage of the sewer system.
Yeah, we don't anticipate there being any demand, meaning the demands of the hotels on water sewer usage.
I'm sorry, what was it?
We don't anticipate any problems with getting approval from the Little Sykes County Utilities Department.
Okay.
Until we make the application, I can't tell you what they're going to do.
So there is a formal application, obviously?
Yes, it's a standard just application, a little public hearing, like applying for building permits and everything.
Okay. And so I heard there'll be a food area, but not a restaurant or bar?
Correct.
Okay. And isn't it true that recently the city changed the rules for the C-5 zone to prevent taverns? Is that, is that, there's an ordinance?
Taverns are not a permitted use, a tavern is a place that is just a bar. Scarlet Club is a tavern.
Right, and so-
The Bennigan's was a restaurant.
Right, but there was that change made?
Yeah.
Okay. And so I think it's important to note that that change was made, so now there's less things that qualify for this potential of development. I think it also needs to be said that this site was responsible for a costly lawsuit that the city lost to the person who wanted to buy the Bennigan's and turn it into a, basically, a civil use, a restaurant bar. And that was to the tune of $1.5 million that the person sued and was successful. And at this point, I think the city should really be very careful with any thought as to what happens here, and what goes here, and applicant absolutely has a right to have a hearing and have you decide, but you don't have to give the variances, they're variances, they're exceptions to the rules, and so considering the situation that the site is in, just with being in the middle of a highway off-ramp network that already is utilized, the fact that the folks who do stay at the hotel will have nothing to do without having to get in a car, or, you know, make a dangerous walk, aside from the Tiger Mart and the breakfast area, the fact that there has not been exact, an exact traffic count, or exactly, you know, a formal traffic study, I think all of these things are things that indicate that perhaps it needs further review, that perhaps a plan could be put forth that might not be as intense of a development. We're talking a four-story building here, this would be the tallest building in the area, right? In this side of town, it's four stories?
No.
What's a taller building in that area?
Raritan Heights project across the street.
Raritan Heights?
Yeah.
Like the-
To the left of the Lowe's building. The Lowe's-
I don't know if it's going to serve this.
Oh, well, it's not even built yet.
Anything says.
Okay, okay, but so you're saying a building that's under construction now is going to be slightly taller than this one?
Not slightly taller, it's going to be significantly taller.
Five stories.
Yeah, five stories, so the five-story building is going up on the other side of the highway. Still, this will be the most intense development that's not even on a highway, not even on a road, it's on, as was said, a jug handle and off-ramp. And, you know, I'm pleased to see somebody thinks that there's, you know, an opportunity here to create a hotel business, but I'm skeptical, like many of the people in the public, of the viability of such an option, considering the number of hotels in the immediate area, including the aforementioned Hilton, Days Inn right nearby, Motel 6, Red Carpet Inn, all within less than a mile from there. Also, Rutgers has their own university and conference center in the same general area, and we of course have two downtown hotels that are much closer to the J&amp;J headquarters and the real center of the action here, and it's my understanding that the Heldrick Hotel, which was built with major help from the city, is not doing so hot, right? That they're not, the vacancy rate is higher than was expected, and they weren't able to pay back their money that they borrowed as quickly as they had planned for. So, given all these things, I think that it's really critical that the city only approve a plan that you can be 100% confident is going to succeed, and is not going to exacerbate any of the existing problems or dangers of the site. It's an unfortunate situation that really that anything was ever built in this area, and a C-5 zone has some things that it allows, but there's reasons that there's all these restrictions on it, and I don't necessarily think that you should grant so many variances for a project that is going to basically bring people to an island where they're going to be stranded unless they have a car and contribute to the traffic. And I think it was a good point that was raised, that the former use had little or no impact on the morning rush hour, whereas this might have a significant impact, and I think further review is necessary, and I think that the board should, you know, respectfully not approve the application as it stands tonight, but to ask for further review and a formal traffic study before you approve it. I think it's great that somebody wants to put a business in New Brunswick, but there might be a better location, or a better way to do it, or at least there could be more substantiating evidence to show that it won't cause a harm. So before you do that, I think you should ask for that, and that's all I have, thank you.
Can you add something, public?
Chairman of the board, looks like deposit verification, the application suggests following the conditions to be attached to the approval. Applies in terms of DNR engineer report dated September 8, 2017, submission of all necessary easements and cross-access agreements for a new approval by the board attorney, city engineer, part of filing the same. Paying of all support bond amounts to be reviewed and approved by the city engineer, submission of a site inspection escrow deposit for engineering inspector fees, amount to be calculated pursuant to Title 1624-160, paying of all water and sewer connection fees pursuant to Titles 1304 and 1308, issuance of a road opening permit from the city engineer required. Applies in terms of legal consulting report dated September 7, 2017, planning escrow review funded for all anticipated post-core reviews, paying any other fees to the city of New Brunswick, letting them develop their use of the project, paying of all outstanding taxes and water and sewer fees, Little Sykes County Planning Board waiver, the applicant has already received that back in August, for also Conservation District, any applicant received that back in August, and letter of DOT approval or waiver, which the applicant has testified they already have received from them. Submit engineering site plan to comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos or plan amendments offered at the hearing. Submit architectural plans to comply with any changes required by planning or engineering memos or plan amendments offered at the hearing. All utilities in other site routes are retained by the applicant at their sole expense. All onsite utilities to be constructed underground, all temporary encroachments into the public right-of-way shall require city council approval, all construction statements shall be done onsite unless encouraged and allowing for the same shall be approved by the city council. Streets should be kept clean of sediment and debris, the applicant shall cause the streets to be cleaned if directed decent by the Director of Public Works, traction passage being installed on all construction exits, replacements of damaged streets, curbed sidewalks, per the direction of the city engineer.
I know it's a little bit, can I ask a question? What is the process if the hotel is sold before the 20-year franchise is up? And what would the process be for a new owner to get Section 8 housing in there, or-
Section 8 housing has nothing to do with hotels.
Okay, or the long-term housing would be there, then?
This is a hotel, that doesn't have anything to do with Section 8 housing, or affordable housing, or anything like that, I don't think you can restrict the stays in a hotel, it's like with housing. Housing's not a, just housing's, their housing isn't a permitted use there.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, because the board is deliberating as well, there are two points that I'd like to make that the board is not already aware of, and one is, as a planning board, you cannot take into consideration whether the use is appropriate or inappropriate for the site, because the use itself is a permitted use. So by right, the use itself is not something that the board can consider and say, well, even though it's a permitted use, we feel that it should not be. That, the second issue is the issue that's been brought up a number of occasions by members of the public, just for clarification purposes as well. This area has, in terms of ingress and egress, that's the exclusive jurisdiction of the DOT, NJ DOT. The board members can certainly ask the applicant to go to the DOT and see if additional ingress and egress would be appropriate or not, but it sounds as though the applicants have done that a number of occasions. The board can consider what is on the site, and whether onsite circulation certainly is safe or not. Board can also consider the variances that are being requested, maybe determination as to whether the applicant has provided the proofs to justify the granting of those variances. That's what the board can consider.
I just think that there's a number of things that we've had, that we've had to consider or not consider off-site, you know, the ramifications of particular development and the traffic that's generated. You know, we all live here in the city, we've all experienced enormous growth and the traffic problems that are associated with it. One thing that's frustrating when you're sitting here as a board member is that you cannot really think of any, you're not allowed to kind of think outside of the initial application, go beyond that application, what that will do, the impact it will have on the immediate area, when you know that traffic half a mile that way, or half a mile that way is going to be impacted by all the developments that we do approve. I mean, one of the things that I think that we as a board here always consider is, if we're limited by the applicant, have they proved, have they proven their case, have they brought to us exactly what, you know, what we have approved for in the zoning, and if they've met that obligation, I, you know, I don't think we have any other choice other than to vote on their aye or nay based on their presentation. Or a number of times, we'd like to say, you know, let's take consideration outside of the zone that they're discussing. We can unfortunately do that.
Okay. Have a motion?
I'll move for approval with the conditions to be led by Mr. President.
Second.
Larry Barber?
Yes.
Chris Gallo?
Yes.
John Petrellino?
Yes.
Mino Castaneda?
Yes.
Bob Cardica?
Yes.
Nicole Burgos?
Yes.
Suzanne Ludbrook?
Yes.
David Center?
Yes.
Jeff Crumb?
Yes.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay.
Good evening once again, members of the board, Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, I'm the editor of New Brunswick today, community newspaper here. I wanted to understand who the new board member is. Get your name.
Bob Cardi, C-A-R-D-I-C-A.
Thank you, sir, welcome to the board. Did, can I ask, did he replace Ms. Neubauer, or is he filling the vacant alternate seat?
Correct.
So he's replacing Harley Neubauer. Okay. And I'll just take this opportunity to remind everybody on the board that you're required to file a financial disclosure statement within 30 days of being appointed good to hear that that happened, and I'm glad that the board's back in session, I don't think there's been a meeting since July, and I still have some outstanding questions that I wanted to ask related to the May 1 meeting, and it's a pretty simple question, first question's for Mr. Castaneda, as you recall, you're Rutgers employee, but you still voted yea on a project where Rutgers was a partner on that occasion, you haven't addressed it since then, could I just ask you to address that decision and, you know?
Could you use your fresh mind, remember your application and everything?
This would be the Cultural Center project, where I raised the issue that Mr. Castaneda shouldn't have asked to vote on the application, he did anyway, and then later there was a change.
So, I voted based on the advice of the council here, and I was, I basically dictated my actions as such. It was later found, I believe, that I sure have voted, and then I was taken to justify that, but I personally acted on the advice of council here.
Okay. So you, but you agree you shouldn't have voted, yeah?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to, I think the board member has an obligation to make an inquiry from counsel, and I advised him that there was a direct conflict in this matter, the applicant decided to re-present that application from the state. Is that right, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
So, on that re-presentation, there was notice to the public, it's also publication of the notice, I'm sorry, have me back to you, notification of the application to the public, so the application was re-presented to the board, and the prior advice that I gave, out of an abundance of caution in this case, we refrained from having him provide any input on that application.
I understand, so it was the applicant's decision, not the, not yours, or Mr. Castaneda's decision to do the do-over, it was the applicant's decision? Okay. And I believe that on that same day, Mr. Crumb, you voted yea on that application, and your spouse is a Rutgers employee, so do you have any, you know, how do you explain that? Why did you, why did you-
I didn't realize it was a conflict at the time, and when I was alerted to the fact that it was a conflict, I did not hear from you.
So you agree it was a conflict, and you shouldn't have voted on that?
I'm going to, if I may, Mr. Chairman, the issue of conflict, I'll say that the further removed you get from whether there's a financial beneficial interest for that applicant, the less of a conflict there would be. I think that, it's like, you know, about seven degrees of separation, six degrees of separation, you could probably find that someone's related to someone who's related to someone who's- who's actually a principal in an application fairly easily if you look hard enough. The issue really is whether there is a legal conflict of interest. In this case, I made a determination that there wasn't a legal conflict of interest because there was no direct benefit to the applicant or the applicant's family.
So, so it was evaluated with regard to Mr. Crumb's spouse?
I'm making a general statement about whether there was or there wasn't conflict, what the conflict analysis is.
Okay, well, the analysis would be different in each case.
It would be.
Right, and so, so I, I'm just trying to get your, your side of the story. You, you thought it was okay, but now you, you agree you shouldn't have cast a vote on that?
Similarly, we're taking the advice of the council.
Right, but you, you had not been advised with regard to the matter?
After the fact.
After the fact, you...
Correct. Yeah.
Okay, I understand. And the reason I, you know, bring this up is because, you know, I want things to be done above board and by the book and I don't think that, you know, Rutgers should get a pass because they're such a major institution here.
Can I say something to you, Charles?
Of course.
The truth is, is that sometimes in that particular case, there was a large amount of people involved that not, it's not as transparent to see the little parts behind it and sometimes people don't realize that there is anything and when it does come to the light, then it's addressed. There's, you know, here you have one person running something that's pretty straightforward. On a situation like that at the Performance Center, there's a massive amount of people involved. Not everybody is always aware exactly of the intricacies.
Yeah, no, I understand, it's a project with lots of different partners and, you know, being, all of us having roots in New Brunswick, many of us have connections to Rutgers one way or another. But, you know, just so you guys know, the standard I use is I look at your financial disclosure forms and I see if you list Rutgers as a source of income for either you or your spouse or your dependents that are living with you. And if so, I take the position that I don't think you should be casting a vote on a project where Rutgers is a partner.
Mr. Cradaville, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna say something here. I mean, you seem to be castigating the board members for, for what they did and frankly, I think you should be congratulating them because we went through and just exactly as you said, we made sure we did it right. When some things became apparent after the first vote, there was another hearing on it and cleaned all it up, so there wasn't any issue about any potential conflicts. I think this board has gone beyond the zoning board also of trying to identify conflicts and anybody has them to recuse themselves. So I, I really don't understand your point because I, I think you said this to me before, how these boards, these two land use boards have done a good job in trying to be above board and be clear with any, any conflicts and not have any issues and to do things right and I think the board did that even. So I'm really kind of surprised you're kind of castigating some of the board members. And to point out before, these people volunteer for this and it's a lot of time out of, out of their lives and it's a really unfair way of doing it.
I, just to, you know, clear the air for the record, I did tell the board they did the right thing when they voted on the, on the final time. Mr. Crumb was not there, Mr. Castaneda was not there. There has not been, I'm not, I don't believe they've been present for a meeting of the planning board since then. So this being the first opportunity, I, I have to, to ask them to explain their side of the story. I'm just asking for their side of the story. And I think I'm doing it in a polite way and I don't think castigating is the, a fair, fair way to put it. But I'm just, I'm just following up because it was never said, it was never followed up by these members. These members didn't start out the meeting by saying, "Yeah, this is May 1st meeting. We both casted votes that we shouldn't have casted, we recused ourselves." So because you guys didn't bring it up, I'm bringing it up and I'm just getting your side of the story and that's all it is. It's not a, it's, it's not to make anybody feel mad, it's to get the full story and to just tell you where I'm coming from that, that in the future if there's an application where Rutgers is a partner and people who have Rutgers on your financial disclosure forms probably should recuse yourself, just as a matter of guidance and that's just one man's opinion, but I just try and help, so thank you for your time.
Other matters of interest to the public?
Go ahead, Charles.
Second.